Hammond City Council Meeting, June 11th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing, none. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I ask you to please stand for our prayer and pledge, and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Let's take a moment of silence to observe our brothers and sisters who have lost their lives defending us. Eternal heaven and father, we just come to you right now. Give you glory, honor, and praise that it do your name. Thank you for your daughter and son, Jesus, who died upon the cross that we too will have access to the tree of life. Father God, we thank you for your love and your guidance and your protection. We thank you that everything will be done this evening decent and orderly and pleasing and in your sight. I just continue to bless this council, that you continue to bless the city and the administration, continue to protect our police and our family, that they continue to protect and serve us. Father God, continue to build us up as a city of love, faith, and hope, and we just thank you for it all. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Now, for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move into our reports. First, we have council report, and we have Andre Monot. Tell me how to say that.
Mono.
He's not French.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're here to give us some information on the Hammond flood study.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Mayor. Thank you for having me. I'm Andre Mono with Principal Engineering. We are retained by the city to investigate the possibility of reduction of base flood elevations around the city, especially in that area between the university and the railroad tracks. It's known to have a base flood several feet higher than the ground. So, we give you a status of the effort and tell you some of the things we found and when we expect to wrap up. Okay, so, yeah, that's what I said. Study objective, tell you the reason we're doing this, give you some of the basics of a flood insurance rate map firm. That'll help you understand kind of what we're looking at if you understand how that particular sausage is made. Give you some observations from that focus area, what we're thinking right now, and this is preliminary. These are not conclusions, but observations. And then, what next? And I'll be brief. Don't worry. Okay, so, the objective is to identify a strategy to reduce BFEs. There are several ways you can reduce BFEs. Go from the easy to the hard. It could be that all you have to do is just revise the map because they made an error in the mapping. Maybe they made an error in the modeling, so you remodeled, then you remap, then you can lower BFEs. Or maybe their modeling is good, and their mapping is good, so you'd have to construct a project, say, a system of retention ponds or a drainage improvement, then you'd have to remodel, then you'd have to remap. So, you hope to do that with as little effort as possible. So, that's the purpose of this investigation, is to identify the least cost and most effective strategy for reduction of BFEs. So, the firm basics, flood insurance rate map or a firm, is just the drawn result of a flood insurance study. So FEMA hires consultants that perform models and studies, publish that in the flood insurance study, the FIS, and then they produce the map. So, that's the little flow chart on the bottom. Do the modeling, do the mapping, and then they publish the documents for the public to use. Okay, so, the first step in the modeling is hydrology. In plain terms, that's how much water runs into the stream when it rains, right? So, you define the watershed. For instance, Hammond is in the Tickfall watershed, and then this area in question is in the Ponchatoula Creek sub watershed, right? So, define the watershed, how much rain falls. Use engineering tools and calculations to establish how much water travels down the channel, essentially. So, hydrology is how much water, if you want to think of it that way. The next step in the modeling would be hydraulics, which is how does the channel respond? So, you can see in the bottom left, a cross section of a channel. The computer models they use takes the depth of the channel, the width of the channel, the shape of the channel. Is it rough? Is it smooth? How does it move that water through? And then, it predicts the rise and the speed of that water. So, how much water, and then, how fast? How high does it come up? And sorry, dispel any romantic ideas of computer models. If you see all those reams of numbers right there, the modeling or the software routines used by FEMA were developed in the '80s. So, a human being has to type in all of those numbers, put that into the computer, and then the computer spits back another page of numbers that have to be read one at a time by a human being. It's not as whiz-bang as you might expect, but it is a very effective tool. It is a very effective tool. So, you get those reams of numbers back. For each cross-section analyzed of a channel, you see a speed and a water surface elevation. Now, those sections that FEMA cuts might be two miles apart, three miles apart where the stream is regular, or if there's a lot of irregular behavior, they might take them closer together so they'd be several hundred yards apart. So, for Ponchatoula Creek, there are only something like 15 cross-sections on that whole stream length. So, you receive that output, and then someone has to take the numbers individually, put them into a table. So, you get the water elevation at various points along that stream. Then, essentially, they connect the dots. There's a little more to it than that, but they connect the dots and make a linear profile, and that goes into the FIS profile plot, the flood insurance study profile plot. It's kind of hard to see, but you can go online, and you can read those, and they're plotted for all of your streams. Okay, so, from the profile plot, they take a topographic map with contours, like a USGS quad map, and they'll trace outward to establish the limits of flooding. And when they establish those limits of flooding, then they trace that out, and that becomes your flood zones. So, if you see the upper right there, that kind of sinuous blue shape, those are the flood zones. That's taken in Tens Mahoa Parish, just north of Hammond. So, the point of all that is to illustrate that there are many steps, often done by many different offices, and there's a lot of judgment and a lot of iteration. So, there's a lot of opportunity for those folks to make errors as they go through it. Now, generally, these are professional people doing a good job, working very hard, but the opportunity for error exists. And remember, they have to model the United States of America. So, they're swinging a blunt instrument. So, they're not going into the finest level of detail, perhaps. They just, they need to get it done for a reasonable cost to a reasonable level of accuracy. So, sometimes, errors are made. So, then, when we're looking at this, we're looking at the hydrology. Was that step performed correctly? Were there any errors or inconsistencies? Or maybe oversimplifications, okay? Because they're not going to make a big error. What might happen is they would make a small error in the hydraulics when they predict the channel sections. Did they make any errors or simplifications there that might tend to overpredict the BFEs? So, let's say they get the hydraulics correct, they get the hydrology correct. Perhaps there was an error in the tracing out of the map, okay? So, it's people with pencils, right? I've done this myself, so you think it's more high-tech than that, but it's people reading numbers, looking at maps, and tracing what they think is the correct limits on a map with a pencil, which is then drawn by a computer technician. Okay, so, our observations in the focus area, which is around the university and south to the sea and railroad embankment, north of Church Street. It's widely reported that the base flood elevations are several feet higher than the ground, and say, in the 2016 rain events, there really was no flooding to speak of there. So, that sticks in your mind, you think, "This is funny." And if you look, this is a snip of the flood zones in that area, and you see that sharp boundary of the blue shape at the bottom. That's the railroad embankment. So, everything north is in the flood zone. Everything south is not in the flood zone. That seems a little bit strange. So, as we began this, we made a data request to FEMA for all of the cited studies and information in the flood information study. And so, this is the published study that establishes this map. They gave us some of what we asked for in February, which was very good and very useful. It was the hydraulic models. The colors don't come through here. This is LiDAR topography, so satellite flown shoots some kind of electromagnetic radiation, and based on the bounce-back, you get a pretty rough idea of topography, and you can map it. So, you can't see it too well here, but I guess there's color relief of the topography. So, it's higher up top, kind of in a red shade, and gets, you know, more toward blue as it gets low. The point here, I guess, looking at this, is you can see the streams in blue. You've got complex behavior. It's not just one stream running to one outlet. You've got streams coming together, coming apart. You've got headwaters for little streams within some of the other basins crossing through, and based on the sort of the one-dimensional cross-section methodology employed in the hydraulics of HECTU, that's the core of engineer software used to model this, it's difficult to get your arms around this. The software just isn't set up, or the routine just isn't set up to do that. Now, the people who are doing this aren't dumb. They know that, okay? So, there are ways to compensate for that. But just looking at it here, you've got several methods of ingress for water and several methods of egress for water. So, it suggests a high opportunity for error, okay? Which also suggests opportunity for correction by the city in a letter of map revision effort. Same picture here. You see those red lines, four, two on the left and two on the right. Those are cross-sections cut by FEMA and put into the model. So, we took the LiDAR topography. We took the model information given to us by FEMA, and we reconstructed the topography used in their model and plotted that against the base flood elevation to see if anything was revealed. So, is, does the LiDAR topography agree with the model topography? Because if they're different, then they're modeling something that's different than reality. And where's the base flood elevation? Does it look funny? Did they perhaps map it incorrectly? So, this is kind of step one. So, you see that plot of lines right there. That's one of the cross-sections. You don't have to worry about which line is which exactly if you just look at the behavior. So, the solid line is LiDAR. The dashed line is the modeled topography. And they're pretty close. They're not exactly right, but I would say that this is pretty close, pretty good fidelity. You know, the horizontal line through there represents the base flood elevation established by the study. So, this is a sampling. We've got a lot of these. I'm just showing you a few. The next one here, on the left, it's okay, but on the right, inside that red box, you see the solid line much lower than the dashed line above it. What that means is the model assumed the ground was much higher than it was, than it actually is. So, we're trusting this LiDAR. So, I'm assuming this LiDAR is correct. The effect there is that it models a higher water surface elevation. Think of it this way. If you have a bucket, and you pour that bucket into another container that's tall and narrow, the water's going to come up high. If you pour that bucket of water into a wide pan, the water's going to stay lower, right? So, the same amount of water can reflect a higher elevation or a lower elevation based on the shape of the container it's in. So, you think of it that way. What they're doing is they're narrowing the container in the model. So, the model is saying, "Water's up here," as opposed to "Water's down here in reality." Now, that's not a, say, a smoking gun, okay? Because this, that is an error. We believe that's an error in the model. There are many sections. It could be that that error doesn't have much of an effect on the result, but it's something to start looking at. It's a thread, so we're pulling on that, on that particular thread. Okay, another one, you can think of this like the good, the bad, and the ugly. You see here a section where there is a channel, and the model does not even pick up the channel, right? So, the model neglected one of the drainage canals in the city. This one, this is at the crossing at university. It could be it was hydraulically omitted, and they made some correction over here, you know, kind of like a bolt-on duct tape solution, if you will, as they're going through this model to make it correct. We're digging into that, okay? So, the next steps, I'll say that the investigations they made strongly suggests that modeling revisions could yield BFE reduction, right? So, what we've seen in the data so far suggests that there are inconsistencies or missteps made in the initial modeling, because it's a complex situation. And if you think about the scope of the modeling was the parish, this is just a speck on the size of the overall model. It does not appear they accounted for the cross drains that drain south through the sea and railroad embankment. And, let's see. Okay, so, and then certain, several canals, not just one, but several canals, were not included in the hydraulic model, although they were included in the hydrologic model. That's a finer point, but it could be that some benefit to the city could be realized by incorporating those canals. So, the next step is, where we are now, is to confirm that what looked like errors are in fact errors. What looked like missteps are in fact missteps. That it wasn't intentional, some correction. So, we're going to make a request to FEMA again for the information that we did not receive with the initial request to make sure that something that is written later doesn't explain away the models earlier. But it doesn't appear that it will, but we need to make sure. The 2012 study that the city accomplished, your flood plan manager was good enough to provide to us. So, we're cross-checking their results against the FIS to see if there's consistency. If there's consistency, then that lends credence to some of the FIS results. If it doesn't, then maybe there are broader problems with the FIS. Going to re-request the information, and then finally, you know, we're going to recommend a strategy to the city, taking into account what's the potential for BFE reduction. And so, if we're going to recommend something, we want to make sure it's a good use of city funds, and it has a good potential for success. So, if it's remodeling, then it would be some remodeling effort followed by a letter of map revision request to FEMA, where the models are submitted for technical review. The proposed revised maps are submitted for technical review. If FEMA concurs, they'll publish that for public comment. And if there's no adverse reaction or reason not to, then it would become final. But none of that's guaranteed until it's in the bag. So, that's why we want to conduct this very small, limited effort now before embarking on anything more significant.
In the study, it was on the whole city limits or just part of the Hammond city of the flood?
The 2012 study?
No, your investigation right now that are checking out to see if there's errors, is it just around the college area?
Yes, sir.
Or is it expands into other flood areas in the city limits, flood zone?
We're focusing on that area.
Okay.
But it's all tied together.
Okay, so, focus is there, but some of the other areas might be... Okay, because I thought it might have been on the whole city limits investigating. So, that's why I just wanted to clarify that.
We can, but we're starting and focusing right here.
But this study here is focused right there?
Yes.
Okay, because I was told it was the whole city flood. So, that's why I wanted to make sure I clarify that. Are you able to email me that PowerPoint, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on this computer.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps, but I can certainly email.
Very good.
Timeline?
Timeline, depending on the receipt of the modeling from FEMA, we could be complete in 30 days.
How long have you been waiting for FEMA?
Well, it depends. Sometimes, it'll be two weeks, sometimes, two months. So, we have yet to make the follow-up request. So, we'll make that follow-up request for the other information that we did not receive.
When would a property owner see any change in their flood insurance?
If we conduct remodeling or remapping, and it demonstrates reduction in base flood elevation, then that would get packaged up and sent to FEMA. And the LOMR process, L-O-M-R, letter of map revision, start to finish is about 180 days.
I had one done in Hammond on this Walker. It took it over a year to get the LOMR. So, are they still that backed up since the storm? Are they catching up?
It depends also on their comments and then the speed of the back and forth. The city of Mandeville began one, and I want to say, start to finish, that one was 18 months. But there was a lot of iteration back and forth. So, if it's simple, you know, for instance, the LOMR, where you're just writing a letter on, say, one small piece of property.
This is not simple.
That can be done pretty quickly. This is not simple.
When were the, when was the flood map or the flood study done by FEMA? Like, what year was that? Where did they draw this line, the base flood?
The latest version is 2010.
Okay.
But the modeling on which that flood insurance study is based was conducted in part in 1988, in 1999, and in 2000.
So, we obviously, as a city and a parish, done a lot of work on drainage. You know, just recently, we have a canal that was concreted to make sure things flooded. Do those things get, I guess that's what the 2010 version, they take into effect things that we are doing to help our drainage?
They probably did not.
Okay.
They probably did not. So, usually, what they do, it's expensive to remodel. So, they don't remodel every time they issue new maps. What they've been doing is remodeling every 20 or 30 years, but they will remap more frequently using better topographic information.
So, I would say there's probably a lot of room here for things that have been done to fix what drainage problems we did have. And, as you said, there are some errors. You know, I live in a home that was built in 1954 by my grandfather. It has never flooded there. It's on the other side of that railroad track. So, that is inaccurate base flood elevation in my very inexperienced opinion. But, I mean, I know a lot of homeowners in my area have that same complaint.
Yes.
And are very hopeful that this will bring something for us, some relief.
We are as well. I mean, I would say one point of caution is we don't want to cook up some model that shows a very low base flood elevation that lowers it too far and communicates a level of safety that shouldn't be communicated.
Well, the problem, I'm sure most people are aware of this, but it's particularly in the higher Kate area and some of these other areas, is our base flood elevation is so high. People are building four feet off the ground.
Yes.
And then you're next to a ranch that's been there since 1950. You're creating, you know, in my neighborhood, there was a house that almost got flooded just from a heavy rain because your drainage from a four-foot, you know, high dirt pad from next door is, I mean, it's causing huge problems. I'm sure this is not the first time you've heard this complaint, so...
So, how much longer you got on your study? You think possibly when you'll be finished with your process? Do you have a...
Well, the, I guess, the things within our control, we can finish up in several weeks. If the FEMA request takes longer, then it may stretch out a little bit. But what I anticipate when we receive additional information from FEMA is just to check to make sure there's nothing that invalidates what we think, if that makes sense. So, that should be short work.
So, by the end of the year, pretty much, you're pretty confident in that?
Absolutely, by the end of the year. Absolutely, by the end of the year. Yes, sir.
When do you make your request to FEMA? When are you planning on doing that for the additional information that you risk?
First thing tomorrow morning.
And you said something about city money. How much, what, can you explain the process? What does it cost to do this? How are we, this is a new council. None of us actually hired you. I'm glad you're hired, but we don't know the process of what's happening and who's paying for anything.
Okay, we're working on a time and materials basis, so kind of by the hour. Now, I don't know what's been expended to date. I don't have that in front of me. I can get that for you. But it's a small effort to establish a strategy. And then, once the scope is known, you know, we would work with the city engineer's office to reach concurrence on that scope, and then estimate the effort required and bring that for council consideration.
So, if your consulting comes out to where we definitely have a problem, and it's probably a winnable, like, adjustment to be made, is that a long timeframe as well, too, typically? Like, as far as getting the adjustments made? If you decide that, yes, it looks like there's serious issues here, and it looks like they might be wrong, and this would definitely improve your premiums? How long does that process would take?
It depends on the complexity of the effort. You know, the study, the study to prepare to submit the change could take several months. If it's extremely involved, and it includes a lot of physical survey, you know, it could take a year.
Okay.
So, anywhere from a couple of months to a year. And then, when you engage FEMA to make revision to the map, they do technical review on your product, then they put it out for public notice. So, that process is anywhere from six months to a year.
Okay, so, it could be two years from...
It could be two years. You know, the outside would be something like two years.
Okay.
Yeah. Chuck, do you want to come give us some information?
Henry Franco is the principal of this engineering firm. Their budget is $35,000. They've drawn down about half of that, but he probably will keep up with that. And it will probably cost the full $35,000. It was appropriated within our drainage capital appropriations, 11806, maybe, is that right? And it's ongoing, and if we have to do the full hydraulic model and remodel it, I would say you're looking at probably six figures for that. That would be another year before you'd know if it was fruitful to press forward with that. So far, I'm very happy with what they're doing. They're doing a great job. So, that's how finances is working with it. It's funded from a previous appropriation, and they have a contract with the city for that one.
Right. Okay.
Separate contract.
Thank you. That was helpful.
I mean, we did pay $1,000 so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sound to closing, 3607 Highway 190 West. My concern was, you say you just took southeastern area, right? So, would, I mean, how many miles or whatever is that, you know, covering? That y'all just doing a survey on and stuff?
Well, we're not doing a survey, per se. So, we're looking at the ground elevations, and we're looking what FEMA thought the ground elevations were, and then how they went about modeling. That's our focus area. We have the information for the whole city.
Okay. What radius is that, pretty much? Radius, what's the radius you're going out from the college?
From southeast and just...
A mile to, you know...
Is that mainly because it was, that was a flood zone, big flood zone area, SLU?
Well, it's reported that that is an area where the base flood elevations are, seem to be out of whack with what's experienced when it rains.
Okay, did Chuck and him recommend that?
No, I didn't. Let me respond to your question. Can I?
Yes, sir.
If you look at this map, there's the east-west sea and railroad, and then go up the north-south railroad. This line and this line, this quadrant is almost 100% flood problem. And they're doing a, pretty much a desktop model to see if it's feasible to a LOMR. If it's feasible to a LOMR, it's going to expand into Kipps District and then to some of these other areas that's where you live, you don't have here. And we're going to pick that off. That's why you're looking at quite a bit more money, because just the, it's very, it's just time-consuming. But that's the idea. We had to at least start with what's the worst, which is, this is Providence District, some of Sanes, and some of...
Stevens.
State District is 100% flood. So, that's what we were trying to address. And it was a massive increase from 2000, 2010, 2016. We're done 2016.
I think it's on 10.
It's been jumping up a foot or two every time. So, we're not, it doesn't make sense to me, and we, these are experts in this area, so...
So, pretty much, when you're saying, the BFE, when it's, if it's adjusted in that area by the university, that's actually, is going to affect all the way out to, like, west Hammond, or it's just going to affect...
Well, those channels are all tied together. So, you know, when you get into the study there, it all links together.
So, it could adjust all the way out, or it's just really going to be, if you evaluate and do the study on that, that's really just going to change that? You would actually have to do another work order for the west of Hammond?
Well, it depends how we draw the boundaries when we start the study.
This is a feasibility study. If the feasibility study has positive results, I would anticipate everyone being on board with expanding it.
Okay.
But you can't afford to do the whole city. You'd be three years just seeing if it's feasible.
Okay.
Took what we thought, I thought was the worst area, and starting there, and it'll expand. So, I think it'll have to be up to the mayor and the council.
Yeah. I think where the confusion was with me, well, I think when I asked, I asked if it was all flood zones in its city limits of Hammond, and I don't think I was told that it was. So, that's why I just wanted to confirm if it was or not. Typically, right now, it's just by the university right now, the study.
For feasibility.
For feasibility, yeah.
Not actually the strategy. The strategy comes later, right?
Well, feasibility and strategy, so that's hand in hand, right? So, we would hope to report to you what we believe is a suitable strategy to pursue BFE reduction.
Okay.
You have been successful in Jefferson Park in doing the same thing. That's my understanding.
We've done a few in Jefferson. We've done a few in the city of Mandeville as well. Yes, sir.
That have gone and the customers paid.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions from the public? I don't know who's here on this topic.
All right. At what point would you start the other areas? Because it sounds like this takes time. Would we want to identify areas in where you're studying by the college? Wouldn't it be a good time to start expanding, not wait until that completes? Or otherwise, you're six years down the road before you finish the city?
Well, it's not going to go that far, I guess. So, we're focusing on this area here. If you look, so you see the two red shaded areas, kind of like the triangle shapes, so the whole thing's kind of a triangle shape. the whole thing's kind of a triangle shape.
Floodways.
The floodways, right. So, let's see here.
That's the Yellow Water Canal.
Yellow Water Canal. Yellow Water Canal and Ponte du Lac Creek. So, if you look at the, at the two red lines on the left side, that's Yellow Water Canal. On the right side, that's Ponte du Lac Creek. So, that's on the other side of university there. So, I mean, we're looking at that region as a whole. It is all working together, so, I mean, those are continuous streams of water. Did I answer your question right, Jeff?
Not, I don't know. I mean, my question was just that, Sam and Dick, y'all have the city divided up into, like, three areas, three stages of this process. And I was just asking, is it, y'all aren't going to start one, one area to completion, which is a two, you'd make a two-year project before you'd start the next area?
No. No, I don't think that's what you're saying. Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments regarding the flood study?
I do have a question. If, my understanding, all of the things that went into creating this base flood elevation, if the city were to focus on one thing, for instance, we're assuming that the ladder was accurate, and we'll just give them that assumption considering there is no human, more or less, interpretation of that. If you went based on, I'm trying to put the words in your mouth, the mistakes by leaving off the canals, if you were to focus strictly on one of those aspects as opposed to the three or four aspects that went into that, would it in fact make it quicker to have, instead of individual modifications, a modification for an entire area? I guess my question is, do you have to focus on all of the aspects that may be inaccurate, may be inconsistent, could possibly be faulty in order to get this process moving along?
You can think of it this way. You can just look at the mapping and try to just remap.
Right, I understand that.
Right, I'll get there. And you can just, you can remodel. If you remodel, there's a huge fixed cost to do that. So, there's not much incremental cost between looking at topography and sections and all that stuff. So, if you, if you touch your tone of remodeling, you might as well do all of it. It's really not a lot of difference between the section limits and the topography because you incorporate all of that information into it.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
What I'm asking you is, if you focus on one thing, would it be faster? Based on my experience with getting individual assessments or base flood elevations changed by going, not necessarily citywide, if you just want to focus on this one area. I guess my understanding is that you're going to go through or you're going through and trying to address each of the things, again, that could be faulty or possibly human error that plays into it and all of that. If you focused on one thing, which, based on what I've heard, the biggest, I guess, deficiency in how this was determined was the fact that the drainage systems weren't accurately portrayed if they were included at all. So, if you were to focus on that element specifically as opposed to a more broad thing, would it make it faster?
I'm sorry to pick. When you say broad, do you mean geographically or you mean...
No, I mean, getting, getting an aerial wide assessment. If it's a law mark, it's blah blah. I mean, my assumption or understanding is...
I don't know what Dan is asking. Can I help ask?
Yes, sir, please.
The FEMA lomar process says you have to use their model.
Correct.
If you deviate from their model, you can do 1,000 different lomars for every house and potentially have that happen, but what he's telling you, you're going to spend 50 times the cost. So, this is a global correction, and I know exactly where you're coming from, I know where you live, I know all that, right behind the car lot. But that's really what we're trying to address because for years, we've been doing one at a time, one at a time, one at a time. Some get turned down, some don't get turned down, and we just felt like with the latest 2010 map, that it's time for us to take off FEMA. This is the second one, CC can tell you that we've done this. We did it in 98, and we're not successful because John Pro decided, Dr. Ross presented, FEMA all of a sudden said, I guess that's the end of your quest. So, we reconstructed that, brought in experts. I'm not an expert, I know what the process is. Henry Franco's got a very, very reputation for this and been successful. And we're not trying to get him to make anything happen. We just want to know, we want this sold to the FEMA powers that be, and they are not going to allow him just to address the crossing of Hazel, for instance. There is a big crossing of Hazel that was this, where the Hazel Street Canal crosses over the railroad, goes south. And as Charlie knows, we just approved that map. That's not on their map, but there are a lot of other things. I'm not sure the L6 extension, which crosses the university, is on the map. That's a 27-inch pipe. I'm not sure the fact that Yellow Water River was dug out and now 60% of the flow goes on Yellow Water and only 40% goes down Ponte du Lac. We brought that to their attention in 2002, did we not?
Yes.
And they pretty much said, well, that's cool, but they have to see it in the model. And he is using their identical model, and he's simply refuting their geometry and the topography, which is accurate. And he will next refute the fact that there's no relief. They're claiming no relief. So, I hear your question, but they're not going to take it on a global basis unless we do their model, their exact thing that Michael Baker, we did it. Michael Baker probably did it, did they not? The original model?
I don't know.
Probably Michael Baker. That's what works with the core. They hire the core, the core hires Michael Baker, Michael Baker does their model, they're huge, 50,000 engineers work on it. So, that's what this gentleman's doing. This is our Michael Baker.
Right, I understand. And I agree, I mean, I probably would have wondered quite well personally what you're doing and how you're doing it. I'm strictly and specifically asking about the timeline and if there is a way to focus your efforts in order to get, and I understand, you know, the broad aspects, I thoroughly understand the modeling. I'm asking if we can focus our intensity on one thing, and again, you know, my experience with FEMA, they're not big of saying, oh, yes, you're right, we've completely left that out. Let us re, I understand that, but also, when there's enough evidence given on one track or another, it does tend to help them focus a little. So, I guess that's what I'm asking. Is there something?
So, like, when we make the case to FEMA? Well, it asks us, when you do the case to FEMA, you do your remodeling and you approve it, and then you draw the new map. So, they just need them to accept the map or not. So, I, yeah, I suppose if we let our scope, then that could speed the schedule on that a little bit.
So, I got, I got one more question right here, and that is, the timeframe wise, okay, I know you're concentrating right on where the college is. So, if it goes well, as you say, everything goes well over there, is the rest of the city that is in flood zones, is that time going to start over? It took pretty much a year to do this study, and then another year. Are we going to do it one by one, or if it goes good here, is it, is it going to, you know, we're talking about four or five years now?
No, no, this is not, it's not a linear progression. It's not the college piece took a year, this piece will take a year.
Okay, that's my...
I think we can rapidly progress. So, much of this was just understanding what's going on, and the, sort of this college triangle piece is a particularly complex and unusual situation. So, most of the rest of the city appears, you know, in the classic riverine floodplain configuration.
Okay, that was my question as far as timeline wise, because if you had to keep expanding, was it going to be a year, 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 year?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
I got you. Good deal.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you very much. It's very informative. And, yeah, if we can get a copy of those slides from whomever, it's computer that is. All right, mayor stepped out. Any other council reports by anyone, comments or issues? All right, are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? All right, now we move on to the minutes of May 28, 2019. Need a motion to, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 28, 2019.
All right, second their motion.
Andre, can you roll call for us?
Chip Andrews?
Aye.
Carly Wyatt?
Aye.
Von Wells?
Aye.
Sammy Vittori?
Aye.
Steve Liam?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor, we skipped the mayor report. Do you have anything?
No, I was just trying to walk out.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said. Okay. Resolutions, old business. Number one, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 609 Hoover Street, 97% damaged, located in Council District One. The owner is Dorothy and Alma L. Brumfield, care of Dorothy Brumfield, 14496 West David Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. Bobby Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The owner, part owner, is Ms. Beverly Brumfield. She spoke at the last meeting concerning her desire to repair the structure because it was tabled. So, I decided as to what our direction would be. I'm sure that she still wants to pursue that. We received a couple of letters from her, and also today, she received a, emailed us a permissionary letter from her sister, who is the primary owner, Dorothy, in a previous, previous meeting, that she would allow her to do renovations on the structure. However, the initial process is to tear it down. It has to be torn down minimally to the foundation. All of the numbers, the roof, the rafters, the joists, the wall studs, everything is compromised and has to be replaced. So, before she can move forward with the repair, we have to do the 90% of damage, which is that structure to be torn down prior to moving forward with renovation.
Was there, I'm sorry, was there a permit that...
There was a permit pending. We're going to bring that information back as well. There was a permit pending, had not been approved due to the fact that it was indecisive as to whether or not she had permission to do the repairs of ownership. She hasn't owned the property. She's part owner. And the city requires full ownership in order to issue a permit of any sort, renovation, repair, new construction. Now, she's acquired, I think, today, maybe acquired, what we need is, as well as an elevation certificate. It's located in an AE flood zone. That requires a BFE, base flood elevation level, to determine where the existing floor is located. I don't know if you acquired it, you did it today?
Yes, we have it in one or two days.
Okay. So, it's been ordered, but has not been submitted to us. What I would like to do in lieu of that is to have the council go ahead and pursue the demolition with the option to repair, should she provide us with the elevation certificate and proof of ownership. But the structure has to be torn down to the floor.
You didn't mention that out. I'm a contractor too, that knows how to tear a structure.
You could, you could let them know that. I don't want to say that.
You ready?
Okay.
Okay, when we left here, y'all said y'all was going to table this. My name is Beverly Ann Brumfield, Maryland. Yes, I am part owner and owner of the 609, 609 and a half East Hoover Street. Your records may not reflect what they were looking at. I have, I have to bring it to your attention, how I've been treated these past two weeks with your building department and Bobby as well. When we left here, y'all told him to look for a permit. On that Monday, I called the permit department, spoke to Ms. Donna. Ms. Donna stated that my, the status of my, my building permit was in review since May 9th. No one has contacted me, mailed me, emailed me, done anything. Only thing I see here on this table today is that Bobby is trying to secure a demolition. He is also trying to look for things to, I guess, convince y'all that the city needs to, you know, demolish our property, that we, as a family, can do ourselves and repair ourselves. I have a contractor license with the city, and he didn't mention that. I didn't make it known when I applied for the permit, I thought that's all you had to do. They told me, when I finally got to speak with Bobby, that I had to go through an elevation. So, I ordered one, paid $250 for one. Now, I get another email yesterday stating, oh, you need to do a succession, or you, you need to do, our ownerships need to be signed and a permit for demolition, I guess, the burn-up product. None of this has been put in writing by the building code because Bobby, like I remember, said he had nothing to do with the building permit. The building official has not till this day responded to anything, nothing, no letter, no comments, no nothing, and I don't know what to say about that. But I do know as a woman, small business woman, I was not treated right, and they have treated me just like I didn't even exist. And I'm very disappointed with Bobby and your building code department. But I've even emailed the mayor. I've even called the mayor's office twice, spoke to both of his secretaries, no return calls. What is going on? I don't understand. Now, I got to come to the council and tell you how it was mistreated and how the disparate treatment and what's going on behind closed doors and who's doing what and what's everybody's job. You're confusing us as homeowners. You're telling us to do one thing, then when we get there, it's another thing. I need y'all to know, I'm crystal clear on what's being told here. But I don't think Bobby has the right to ask your council to demolition, nothing, because he did not do it properly, first of all. I was not notified. And the letter that I did receive from the mayor and, and his office stated that, do we want a demolition or do we want a repair? Well, I came to the meeting, I told y'all, we want a repair. I know the house is 50% burned and it needs a new roof, a new frame system and a new flooring. I'm aware of that, but I haven't even been given the opportunity to present myself or my case, so for that, I'm very disappointed. And I'm disappointed on how these men, supposed to be leaders and officials, have handled it. Now, this could cause or create a lawsuit, but I don't want to sue the city. All I want to do is repair my home, and I think I should be given that right. That's where I sit.
Dorothy is your sister, is that right?
Yes.
And who is Alma?
Mother, she deceased.
She's deceased. Okay, so that's how you have ownership is through your...
No, I had ownership before she was deceased.
From her, though?
From the city, from her and from all parties involved. I'm the, I'm the silent partner. I don't say much until I have to.
But is there documentation showing that you are an owner?
There's documentation. I didn't change the titles out of my mother. I left it like it was until they passed on it. But now I'm going to change it because I see I'm going to have to, because you don't get respected when people don't know what's going on with you.
Okay, I just want to ask Bobby, when was, or both, when, when did you first notify them of, I mean, the house has been 97%...
Burned.
Burned.
Correct.
For how long? How long has this been?
I think, if I don't, I don't have the fire report, but it was, it was 2018, roughly October, maybe.
Received our first letter in March.
October?
May, well, actually, May, because he took the pictures in March and the letter came to Dorothy in May.
His question is, when, when did it burn?
Oh, it burned July of 2018.
Eighteen July, okay. And then y'all started...
It was set afire. Someone set our house afire. And had, now, they set our house afire and found the person who set it afire and the insurance and all the things that surrounded, we wouldn't be here today. Now, he wants to destroy our property, don't give us the opportunity to do nothing to our property. How, how can he ask that?
She's, she's misunderstanding my statement. I'm asking the council to do approval for demolition. I'm not saying that we have to do the demolition. I'm giving the owner the opportunity to do the demolition, but the house has to be torn down to the floor level, which is all the damaged material in the home, based on the pictures you see in our report.
Okay, say that.
Even if she repairs it, she has to remove all of the damaged wood, which will bring the house to the floor. So by terminology, that's demolition.
Okay.
And that's what she's hearing, I'm saying, she's thinking I'm saying the city wants to demolish it.
Yes, $5,500 for you to tear down each house, don't you think we should put that $5,500 back into our home?
I don't, I don't want, the city doesn't want to demolish your house. We're condemning it, we're condemning it, giving you the opportunity to demolish it.
Well, you didn't say that at first.
Ms. Beverly, I want to ask you a question. When you went to the permit office, what did they tell you?
Oh, she just took my application, had me to fill it out. It was a young black lady sitting there, and said that someone would call me. No one never called. No one never responded, no one, no one done anything, until Bobby emailed me yesterday with all of these stipulations that one, two, three I need to do before a permit. Then they, they denied the permit, so they told me anything.
So you went to the permit office, because see, I need to get a good understanding, and it's not my first time hearing something about the permit office. And that's what my concern is. When you went to the permit office, did they let you fill out the application?
Right.
And so, when you fill out the application, how long did it take before they respond back to the application?
They have never responded.
And so, so Bobby, so Bobby sent you an email?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? But nobody never responded to the, to your application?
No.
That was per her request. That's, that's, that was my response from my presentation from council, based on her need for acquiring a building permit to repair her house. Informing her that it's too far gone to repair what's there. So the initial step is to tear down all the damage. I hope everybody's hearing this clearly. She's got to remove all of the damaged material before she can proceed with repair, which is going to bring it down to the floor level.
Yep. So you're, you're proposing that an option for the homeowner to do it?
She can tear it down.
As a contractor, I have to, I'm required to apply for a permit. If you deny me a permit, how are we going to even demolish or even do all these things? He's stating that needs to be done.
Don't you have to have a demo permit?
Yeah, we got nothing, we got nothing.
I'm sorry, but you applied for a building permit, right?
That's what we thought we needed, but they never said that we needed that.
Right, but you really need a demo permit.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if they'd have said that, I would have come running back to the permit.
Maybe you didn't get the instruction you needed.
I never do. This is not the first time I've been through this.
But if, you understand that if we pass this, that requiring demolition within 30 days, you get to do that. But if you don't do it within 30 days, then the city can't. And I'm not saying you're not going to, I just want to make sure you understand that you're not, we're not saying the city's going to tear it down unless you don't get to it within 30 days.
We want to clean it up and do it. That's where we at. That's what I'm trying to get him to see.
So we need to make a motion?
Yes. Unless there's anyone else from the, from the public on this matter?
No. Yeah, I got something else to say. We can give her 30 days, but we don't see the problem is, the problem is, we giving her 30 days, but you don't know what the building permit office is going to do.
But she has 30 days to tear it down.
30 days. Yeah, what I'm talking about, so when is she going to get the permit from the building department?
Do you need a demo permit?
She does need, she does need a demolition permit. By the order of the council, with demolition required, we'll issue her a demolition permit.
Thank you.
Ms. Dorothy. How long, she can be joined.
Does she need to go into your office and fill out a form for a demo permit?
I've informed her of that as well.
Okay.
So maybe do it 30 days from the date of the issued permit?
Is that kind of standard, the 30 days?
30 days, 30 days for demolition.
So look, when y'all give her this building permit, uh?
Demolition permit.
Demo. When y'all give it to her, is there any way that I can receive an email saying that y'all gave it to her? Because see, the problem is, and I know people don't really know what's going on, she having problem in the building permit office. And it's not the first time this has took place, but this is the first time somebody stood up in the public and announced the problems that they've been having in the building permit office. And I know she ain't lying because I had the same issue.
Okay.
So I know she not lying about that. So when she receive it, is there any way that we can receive it, letting us know that she already got the permit? I know, I know it's probably not your job to say, it might be Mr. C.C. now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it's forwarded to the council. To confirm that she's followed the, the request of the council.
Thank you.
Make, make a motion to demo.
Second.
Let's see.
We're giving 30, can we make clear 30 days?
Following date of demolition permit is issued.
Okay.
Make a motion to demo in 30 days from the demolition permit being issued.
Second, that motion, second motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck to you. No ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, new business. Number one, a resolution to approve best price located at 285 South Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, to obtain a permit to sell high-low alcohol. The owner is UV LLC. Say that.
Good evening, everyone. Best price apply for the alcohol permits, and they meet all the requirements. The owner, Hertlestein, is here, and if you have any questions, you can.
Is this a new, like a change of ownership?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you work there now, you currently, or is this totally new?
No, it's totally new, but I have a business in Mississippi.
Do you understand?
Would you give us your, a name and address for the record, please? Your full name and address?
For yourself?
For myself?
Your name.
My name is Hertlestein.
An address? An address.
101 Pedro Drive, Madison, Mississippi, 39110.
So you understand the, the limit, the age requirements for alcohol and tobacco, right? Okay. Any questions? Anyone here from the public on this matter? Question of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve change order number two for Zemari Park Pool, project number 11717, for an increase of $13,192. Chris Banksen.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members, Chris Banks from Gasway Banks and Architects here in Hammond. I'm here tonight to recommend change order number two, the amount of $13,192. This change order included the removal of some concrete foundations that, that they ran into when they were getting the site prepped for the building, and to reroute the, the pool outlet into the storm sewer in lieu of the, the?
Drain.
Drain, so the sanitary sewer.
That's a good idea. Is there money within this project already for this change order, Seda?
Yeah, we do.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction of ordinance and set for public hearing. Number one, an introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use, request by Kenshin Investments LLC, owner and Paul Bell applicant, to allow 2019 manufactured home, meeting all code requirements, to be placed on parcel three, being .3861 acres located on Harvey Street, according to a survey by Royce Edwards Jr., dated revised 5/21/2003, Zone RS2. Recommended approval with the following conditions, I won't read those out.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah.
I'm here to represent the zoning commission, and they recommended approval for the expanded conditional use. We're asking you to introduce this for an ordinance for the next meeting. This is a property on Harvey Street that they're asking to put a mobile home there. It's an owner-occupied mobile home, so the applicant is going to be living in the home versus renting it out. We also did a little map of the surrounding area. There's an aerial in your packet with some dots that were done, showing existing mobile homes in the area. There's quite a few. This particular property is not located in a proposed mobile home area, but is very close to one. And due to all the mobile homes in that area existing, is why they recommended approval with the two standard conditions that we attached to expanded conditional uses.
So do the neighbors have to approve that, like, in, you know, surrounding areas and that little, where they're putting the mobile home at? Like, if it's not in the zoning already, or they, they just ask for variance and it's just up to the board to say yes or no?
It's not really a variance, it's, it's through the zoning process, it's actually giving them permission to use that property for a mobile home, but not actually permanently zoning it for a mobile home. So if this person leaves and moves or sells the property, the new owner would have to come to you and ask for permission as well. But the neighbors, we notified them by mail, we put a sign out there, some come to meetings, some call us. This particular one, we haven't heard from anyone.
Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion that we introduce. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved. To introduce public hearing set for June 25, 2019.
Number two, an introduction of an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Bertuzzi Enterprises LLC and NNB LLC owners to rezone Lot 2 of the Bertuzzi subdivision from CN to CH in accordance with survey of William J. Bowden Jr., dated 5/1/2019. Recommended approval by the zoning commission. Tracy Schalace.
This property we're asking to introduce for rezoning, it's at the corner of Corbin and Natchez. Currently, the planning commission approved a subdivision of a larger tract into a smaller tract, and the smaller tract, we're asking for this rezoning. It's strictly to allow a future business to do bottling, and that's why this rezoning has been asked from CN to CH. CN is commercial neighborhood, that's usually a butted next to a neighborhood to, to protect that neighborhood. Right now, across the street, there's industrial that is actually a budding a neighborhood, which I don't know how that happened, but it did, and they're asking strictly for this rezoning for bottling.
Motion to introduce.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing for June 25.
Number three, an introduction to an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Darren K. Johnson to rezone Lot J6 of Oak Ridge Edition, located at 502 Mississippi Street, from RS3 to RS11A, in accordance with survey of James R. Wheat, dated revised 9/18/1995. Recommended approval by the zoning commission.
Okay, so this property is fronting on Mississippi Street. We're asking for rezoning. All the adjacent property around that area is zoned for RS11A. A lot of it is also zoned for, or the proposed mobile home area. Because this has adjacent RS11A, we're asking to officially rezone it. The property owner is planning on putting a mobile home there, meeting all the requirements. The lot size meets all the requirements for RS11A, so we're asking you to introduce for